Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting. I'll make a motion to reconvene and open session at seven o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato is absent this evening.
I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the COVID-19 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
There were no votes taken in our closed session. Would you please stand with me, join the closed session, on the pledge.
United States of America, and to the people who are just standing here, on the nation, on the law, and the physical, the liberty, and justice for all.
Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Don't rush.
Good evening, my name is Len Kepiscus. I live at 163 Prospect Street in Wunsakit, Rhode Island. I have a son who's in the 12th grade but is in an out-of-district school called Helside Alternative Program. He's a straight A student there with perfect attendance. I have been fighting for the last four years to ascertain whether or not my son should be included in the National Honor Society because of his grades. His sister, four years older, was a member of the National Honor Society at the time she graduated. I apologize for making that motion while I'm really frustrated right now. I consulted with a special ed director. She's been a tremendous assistance to me. I've been talking to the superintendent, who's been of assistance. I've spoken with legal counsel from the school department. The bylaws were modified, or might be soon to use the process of being modified, to include out-of-district students who would otherwise meet the parameters of NHS. I learned yesterday via email, excuse me, a text message from Janet Sullivan, that there was a meeting today for students who are going to be invited to the National Honor Society. My son did not receive an invitation. My invitation was sent to Janet Sullivan, my son's invitation. So she received it, contacted me, and asked if I received it, and I said, "No, I haven't." So she had it delivered to my son's school so that he would have it because of school committee and other commitments. I have been home, so I haven't seen him to get the application from him, but I was told the meeting was today. I assumed it was in the afternoon at the conclusion of the school day, as most NHS meetings are. Oh, no. The meeting was at 9:28 this morning at Wunsakit High School, or as the invitation read, I've been told, at the conclusion of second period or during advisory. I can assure you that my son, who doesn't attend Wunsakit High School, has no idea when the end of second period is, nor when advisory would be for him. He doesn't have that, nor do I have any idea. If Janet hadn't reached out to me, my son wouldn't have been here. My son does not attend Wunsakit High School. How you can expect him to be at a meeting at 9:28 to discuss his induction to the National Honor Society at a school he doesn't attend, when he should be in the school he does attend, with perfect attendance, I remind you, is abominant, in my opinion. I think this is just more obstructionist effort for them to try to keep my son out of the National Honor Society because he has an IEP and he's in an alternative program and he's not matriculating at Wunsakit High School. It's more exclusionary tactics, and I won't have it. I am done. I have been fighting for over 12 years for kids with special needs in this district, formerly as the chair of the CLAC and now as a member of the school committee. And this time it's my son, and I am not going to stop fighting for my son or for the other students who are in out-of-district placements and work really hard, harder than a lot of other kids because of their special needs and are being deprived of an honor they're entitled to by whomever decides they don't belong there, they don't deserve it, and I'm fed up. So I'm asking all of you at ministry or school committee, superintendent, to do what you can to assist children like mine so they're not further penalized and excluded because of their special needs, but instead rewarded for the effort that they put forth to this point. Thank you.
Dr. McGee, have you had a... We heard this, what is being done with regards to this particular award and others that parents may not be notified timely so that they can attend?
So first, I want to apologize to Mrs. Kepiscus on behalf of the school department. I... the buck stops here, and it's ultimately my responsibility. But I can assure you that this will be addressed. And I can tell you that as we move forward, students, all students, whether they're students that are matriculating at Wunsakit High School or they are students that are matriculating at out-of-district schools, will receive the proper notification in a timely manner as we move forward. This I will promise, and I will look into this.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Very none. Dr. McGee, recognitions and announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. SEDEXO School Services is ready to begin the 2019-2020 Backpack Program. The goal of the Backpack Program is to eliminate hunger on weekends by providing students with non-perishable food in bags or backpacks. Through this critical program, we are able to provide backpacks filled with nutritious, easy-to-prepare food for students who are at risk for hunger on the weekends. Backpacked food bags are discreetly distributed by school personnel on the last day prior to a weekend or holiday vacation. We ask that they return the empty backpack to the school after the weekend. The Backpack Program is provided at no cost to the Wunsakit Education Department. The funding for much of the food products is provided by the SEDEXO Foundation. Food is also donated by SEDEXO's Wunsakit employees, Wunsakit Education Department employees, and from wedge students' canned food drives. During the 2018-2019 school year, SEDEXO distributed more than 1,600 food bags to Wunsakit students who were in need. Within the Wunsakit community, many of our families often struggle to put food on the table. SEDEXO's Backpack Program is dedicated to alleviating child hunger in Wunsakit. Please feel free to contact Ellen Shalveen, who is the SEDEXO General Manager, should you like additional information regarding this wonderful Backpack Program here in Wunsakit. And I want to thank Ellen and her coworkers for the tremendous job that they do for our kids, not just the Backpack Program, but there are many things that they do with respect to providing our students with the supports, the nutritional supports that they need throughout the school year. I would like to also recognize a wonderful teacher at the Wunsakit Area Career and Technical Center this evening. The Rhode Island Hospitality Education Foundation recognized a number of hospitality industry professionals at their annual Stars of the Industry Awards. The mission of this foundation is to grow the future generation of hospitality professionals while recognizing career and technical education teachers for helping to prepare the future workforce. The Wunsakit Area Career and Technical Center teacher, Ms. Christine Audette, has worked diligently over the past few years to continue to grow experiences and opportunities for the students enrolled in her program. By actively participating in events hosted by Rhode Island Hospitality Association, coordinating field trips to locations such as the Rhode Island Convention Center, the Omni Providence Hotel, and Milton Promises, and bringing guest speakers into the classroom, she's given her students connections in the industry and the ability to explore many different pathways that are available today. Having said this, Christine Audette has been named the Hospitality and Tourism Management Teacher of the Year. Christine will be honored at the annual Stars of the Industry Awards on December 4, 2019, at Twin River. Congratulations on this honorable achievement, and thank you, Christine, for all you do, all of your hard work and dedication to the Wunsakit Education Department and your students. The next item I'd like to discuss is, I believe it's on October 17th, but I believe it's January 10th. The segment, Health Check Kids, is going to do a segment, a story, on our volunteer citizens campus and the $100,000 donation that they received for their new fitness center. Principal Moniz and PE teacher Glenn Wadere are going to be on that segment, so we're tuned in if you get a chance. We're very proud of the work that they have done to procure this donation. And, you know, most of us have been there already, and we've seen the room, and it's wonderful, and our students are very excited. So congratulations to Principal Moniz and Mr. Wadere for their great work and Citizens Volunteer. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any school committee member having comments?
Vice Chair Burke. Just briefly here. I wanted to talk about SEDEXO. They have been helping with my position on the Health and Loans Committee. It's always a great helpful company. But it's a company, though, that we hear of Wunsakit and what they do through Wunsakit. It's a company with a soul, and you don't always see companies that have a soul. And I think that's good to give credit, they have a great soul. And if I can keep my metaphor going, too, tonight we're also honoring a hospitality teacher here who has proven to us that she has a heart, all right? And that's a great thing, too. And finally, without talking about the health, the fitness center, we have, we are going to have students now that are going to have strict bodies. So from our souls to our hearts to our bodies, some great comments tonight, super members.
Vice Chair Burke, I understand you and I have been invited to go to Citizens Volunteer to do a lot of exercising with those machines.
I never received my invitation.
We've got it on file. I also want to talk about SEDEXO. In the summer, they have their picnic where they feed kids at World War II Veterans Park. Not only did we see that they fed children there, but everybody in the park, anybody who walked in the park, whether you belong to a school system or not, you were fed that day, and it was a hot day, and you got water and you had a nice lunch. So I give credit to SEDEXO, you know, for that and for everything they do during the year. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the September 25, 2019, open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, changes? Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman, I was actually going to request to potentially detable my link wasn't working, so I haven't had a chance to actually review to vote on it.
Okay. We have a motion to table.
Motion to table the review and removal of the September 25, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
We'll go on to the minutes. No, stop. Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve and discuss the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone who want to take any item out of the order or discuss any particular item? If not, Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to communications. I guess this, I see National Junior Honor Society in middle schools. I just...
We do, yes. Yes, we do. So if the students and the staff could come up to the podium. About a year and a half ago, there was, I actually received an email from a parent of a middle school student who had requested that we institute a National Junior, Junior National Honor Society at Wunsakit Middle Schools. And years ago, we had a similar program, but it was the presidential awards that we would give at the end of the year, and it really wasn't a National Junior National Honor Society. So at the time, I met with Principals Granado and Renegaldo, and put together, they put together with their staff, with their guidance counselors, they put together the bylaws. And tonight, they are here to talk about the Junior National Honor Society in both Villanova and Hamlet Middle Schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Ameridola.
Briefly, very briefly, yes. So as you know, we are here to talk about the National Junior Honor Society. This is brand new to me, so I'm very excited to be a part of it. I work at Villa, and I'm here with my colleague, Mrs. Zabo, who works at Hamlet. So we brought some students with us so you could hear from them instead of hearing from us what National Junior Honor Society is all about and kind of where we are in our, in our planning as of right now in our buildings. So we'll start with our kiddos at Villa. If you want to introduce yourselves before you go ahead and do your part.
My name is Angela Dillwitt. And we're going to talk about the requirements, the five pillars of National Junior Honor Society. I'm going to start with scholarship. Students must have a cumulative grade point of average of 85 or higher, with each individual course grade no lower than 80%.
Hi, I'm Morgan Ring, and I'm going to talk about the service. This involves voluntary contributions made by a student to the school or a community done without commitment.
Hi, I'm Monsor Dean. And I'm going to talk about leadership and character. Student leaders are those who are resourceful, good problem-solvers, and idea contributors. Leadership experiences can be drawn from school or community activities while working with or for others. Character. A student of good character is cooperative, demonstrates high standards of honesty and valability, shows courtesy, concern, and respect for others, and maintains a clean disciplinary record.
I'm going to talk about citizenship. Students who demonstrate citizenship, understand the importance of civic engagement with high regard of freedom and justice, respects the law for all citizens at all levels, and demonstrates mature participation and accountability at all activities such as stemming community organizations or school clubs such as stewardship.
Students who meet the scholarship requirement will have an opportunity to complete a form detailing their accomplishments in and commitment to service, leadership, character, and citizenship. Students who accept membership and are inducted into the chapter will attend chapter meetings. Members who also participate in chapter and individual service projects to benefit the school community.
Hi, my name is Sonali Dees. I'm an eighth grader at Hamlet, and I just recently applied for National Junior Honor Society. National, I mean, computer, if I understood. National Junior Honor Society is a community established to represent a natural sense of honesty and hard work. This belief is why I'm honored to be given the opportunity to be a member and inspire my fellow peers to be ambitious, honest, and persistent. Without the support of my teachers, friends, and family, I would not be as encouraged to do my best and to keep wanting to learn again. Being a part of the National Junior Honor Society is an opportunity for me to develop the skills I have and gain new ones so that I can be able to help and do others what my teachers, friends, and family do for me. They inspire and encourage and support me. I am excited and nervous to be part of such an amazing opportunity and be part of a community that will no doubt be challenging and fun. National Junior Honor Society is the highest honor awarded to a middle schooler. I find it to be inspiring. Towards the end of my seventh grade year of middle school, I was recommended by my former teacher to be part of the National Junior Honor Society. And that was when my career opportunity in the National Junior Honor Society began. I want to be part of the National Junior Honor Society because I want to inspire my classmates, and I would also like to inspire my nephew and my wife. I love them to be confident and believe that they can do whatever they put their minds to. In my two years in middle school, I've made an honorable total of eight times. And each time I've made an honor, I felt the need to grow and be better. I try my best to be a dependable student and classmate, so whenever I can help my friends and classmates, I will. My love for learning, teaching, and helping, and since being amazing, wants to be part of the National Junior Honor Society. I believe that being part of the National Junior Honor Society helped me help others. By being part of the National Junior Honor Society, I can help improve my school community by motivating my classmates. I believe that having someone to can relate to with such as someone your own age to go to whenever you need help in school is very important. Not often is it comfortable enough to look for help from the teachers or other members. I felt that once my drive to one group and amazing group of people supporting me allowed me to go about on my own. I believe a way to motivate them and help their school better would be to be tutoring, tutoring sessions will teach and students to understand and feel comfortable and confident on the subject. For some students, it's hard to focus on their work and understand what is being asked of them. So that having someone they can relate to, such as a classmate, to help them understand, focus, and motivate them would, in my opinion, essentially part of, is also significant. I have, and I am working really hard to go above and beyond with everything I do. I feel that I am responsible, respectful, and caring, and a good example for my classmates and generations to follow. I can't think of a better community to be part of, and joining the National Junior Honor Society tells me how loving, thank you.
Hi, my name is Naki Tiusan. I'm an eighth grader at Hamlet Middle School, and it's not only me explaining the pros of participating in community service. Engaging in community service provides students with the opportunity to become an active member of their community and has a lasting positive impact on society at large. Community service enables students to acquire life skills and knowledge as well as provide a service to those who need it most. For my community service hours, I did three main activities. One of them was leading tours at the sixth grade orientation night last year. I toured around the middle school with about 30 parents and students, showing them the gym, library, the nurse's office, and many key places around the school. Another one of my community service activities was participating in a Wunsakit cleanup project at the Rathcomb Street Southern area. During my time there, I helped break up leaves, pick up trash, and uncover old compost patches that had been covered up by grass over time. I had a wonderful experience at the cleanup as it allowed me to see so many of our amazing Wunsakit citizens. My final community service activity of the school year was volunteering at St. Joseph's Church in Wunsakit. While I was there, 10 other volunteers and myself helped roof furniture and painted the walls of the soon-to-be CCF, connecting children and families with them. Worked in the CCF program at the church, we come during our meetings. Community service has opened my eyes to so much of my wonderful ways of helping my community, and I strive to do much more with the students. I look forward to being my community services here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Juan Gates de la Concepcion. I am another member of the National Junior Honor Society. In the National Junior Honor Society, as you've already heard from the members from Villa and Matthew and Sonali, the National Junior Honor Society is an organization where young group students like ourselves are just doing activities to help our community. We do things such as volunteer at places around Wunsakit where we can meet new people and help out our community. Another thing you may not know is that the National Honor Society is also planning events such as blood drives and food drives. We will also be organizing fundraisers. One idea for a fundraiser that we are planning is a fundraiser for congenital heart defects awareness month in February. During the school year, we will also be participating in school cleanups and tutoring sessions for younger students. Another idea we plan at the school is a kindness bulletin board where there will be four steps that you have to go through. Step one, you have to take a kindness card. Step two, complete the action on the card. Step three, take a picture of yourself completing the action. Step four, pass it on. Tell someone else to do the same thing, starting at step one. One more activity in the National Honor Society, we will be taking part in the thankful one. End of February, the students of the National Junior Honor Society will be writing cards for teachers, students, and community members they are thankful for. The last activity I'm going to talk about is the school store. Members of the eighth grade Junior National Honor Society will be organizing and running the school store. We have already organized our inventory and counted our merchandise. We have been organizing times of the day that the school store will be open and price out all of our items. That is all I can here to say about the National Junior Honor Society. I thank you for your time, and have a nice rest.
Dr. McGee, is any school committee member having any questions or comments for the folks from the Honor Society? I have a question. And I think it's probably best directed to the advisors as opposed to the students who have the administrators. You probably anticipate what it's going to be. Our special education students, invited to contribute to the National Junior Honor Society provided they meet the requirements, and I would make a consideration dispense her in out-of-district placements and may meet those requirements as well.
Absolutely. So we just started last year in the fall, in the spring. So we haven't even been up and running for a year, but that's absolutely something that we want to do. I know we have a lot of students that are out of district, and we absolutely will consider them for the National Honor Society. Thank you.
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
First of all, how many members, how many members are of the National Junior Honor Society?
So right now, we have 28 members at Hamlet. We also have members that from last year that are now ninth graders. So in the, once second quarter is done, we'll be enrolling our sixth graders in the National Honor Society, too.
And just to follow up, do we have an induction ceremony?
We have not yet.
Have you thrown in one?
We are.
Make sure you do it my best.
Absolutely. Once we're all together, we're going to do a Villa and Hamlet all together induction ceremony.
Very good, good job.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just get back to my agenda here. My computer is in sleep mode there for a second. We have Ms. Margot Mariso from Neighbor Works here this evening, who is going to speak to the committee about the work camps program, which we have had here in Wunsakit for two out of the last three summers.
Good evening, everybody. So we are here to be approved to have the work camps here again in the summer of 2020. It's hard to believe that we're planning for that already. But we are looking for the same approvals that has been granted for the past three years. We have been really lucky to have this group of volunteers come into our city and do the good work that they have done. The second page in the packet, you'll see some of the numbers of the results of this past year. Forty-seven homes in Wunsakit were repaired and brought up to building code by 362 volunteers that came from eight different states. So it's a pretty incredible thing to have here in our city. They've leveraged a lot of dollars of investment into our city. And the school has been a huge piece of making this program successful. We could not do it without the partnership of the school department. So in the letter, you'll see the summary of our request of what we need to house these volunteers coming in, hopefully for 2020. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And I will say that we have been so lucky to have wonderful, wonderful groups of young people who are very positive and outgoing. We've had no issues with that whatsoever. who are very positive and outgoing. We've had no issues with them whatsoever with discipline or any other thing. And we've actually been approached by people, custodians and SEDEXO workers, to stay, help late, help while some of these kids are. So we're hoping that you will support it going forward.
And just a comment, in my travels throughout the city, I ran into some of these kids and some of the people that they have worked for. And I have nothing but praise for them. And these young people were fantastic, very respectful, and they were awesome. It was impressive to see this bunch in our city. I'll thank you, Seana, but it was very impressive.
And everything that they were asking is the same as last year.
Same as last year.
And now, everything was fine? Some kids don't look bad, right?
Yep, they were excellent. Great performance.
Yeah, that's very good.
My question, do we have to, when do we vote on this, Dr. McGee? Is this coming on our agenda?
I don't think we typically vote on this so fast. I think this was just more of an information.
So the photo?
Great, thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. We'll begin with the policies subcommittee, how to enroll our major burden, Mrs. Kepiscus.
We discussed a number of issues that our policies subcommittee will cover for November twenty-sixth. First was we revisited for the last time our annual charge of policy in connection with how students get, uh, parents get huge credit to add money to student accounts. We discussed moving to Venmo or PayPal as opposed to MySchoolbucks. And unfortunately, MySchoolbucks isn't one that works best with our system, so we will retain MySchoolbucks, although there is a small fee as opposed to Venmo or PayPal, which would be free. Staffing would require, we require additional staffing to match up Venmo and PayPal accounts with our student accounts, and it's simply more cost effective to use MySchoolbucks. We moved on to the field trip policy. This was all generated as a result of a case that runs out of East Orange. We had the commissioner, prior commissioner Wagner issued guidance, and we are looking to develop a field trip policy that will comply with that guidance. So of course, we will use credit as policy, since they were the ones that brought it to an end. The amended policy is now going to be provided to all members of the subcommittee for a review and comment in our next meeting. Are there any issues come around accounting with regard to this proposed field trip policies? And therefore, Mr. Poreas' input will be tremendously appreciated. And we will be revisiting this issue in our next meeting. We also want to make sure with regard to our field trip policy that special education and five oh four accommodations are addressed. Our homeschool policy, this issue has been raised by Mr. Boulay at the high school. The concerns are numerous. How many classes can this student attend? So we're building a class size limits. We have no way we enroll these kids in our system, and therefore, no way to make sure if the students are meeting health and utilization requirements required of all our students. How are these students controlled? Can they be punished? Can they be suspended? What if there's a medical emergency? What if they had a Wunsaka education party student? What if a Wunsaka education party student hates them? Home school students are not counted as our students in the fear funding form or the works of currently, because they have to take classes, limited classes, at the Wunsaka middle school and Wunsaka high school, even though we have no way we're enrolled into our current school system. And there's no real follow-up on home school students. We don't know whether what the parents are saying is actually being done every day. Principals are supposed to receive attendance sheets and parties reports, but no one is really following up to make sure students are, that they're receiving them or they follow up as to the fidelity of the instructions in regards to curriculum. As they, the principals who are present indicated, they're not really sure how they're supposed to do that, since it's really getting recorded attendance or grades in Skyward for our home school students. Principals present were advised by legal counsel who was present that homeschool, because homeschool student is not being educated, the principal is aware of it. It should be reported to BCYF as neglect, to believe no attendance reports are being submitted. But the principals, again, were concerned about there's no way to actually track them available in our system. We looked at the South Houston homeschool policy, which limits the amount of classes and out of, uh, homeschool students can take to two per year, so one per semester. We don't have a current rule in our policy. They can take whatever class they want, so we don't classicize what it's. If we are to continue to permit students to participate in classes at the Wunsaka middle school, Wunsaka high school, we need to figure out a way to hook them in Skyward. And the question is, do we really want to do that? Since we really don't get funding for the children that we're providing these classroom slots to. And we asked whether or not we could actually deny their participation in any of our classrooms. And there is no requirement through CCF law that requires us to allow students to participate in curriculum classes at preschool or the middle school if they are not registered and they are homeschooled. Certainly with regard to extracurricular activities, there was a place that could be occupied in sports in the way a lot of the issues arise out of band and in particular ROTC. So we're gonna be looking at that issue and making decisions for recommendations to the committees to other employers. Let's see how many classes they're allowed to take. As South Houston does, over half is eliminating their ability to take them at all, unless we can figure out a way to register them in Skyward. So that we can track them and make sure we know what they are. For example, if they were a fire or a true roller, we don't even know if these students are in classroom three oh five. So it could be we encounter those students in three oh five, but we haven't, but we have to respond to them. And then lastly, we visited the minimum grade policy, which is pretty handy about publicly for as many years as I've been a model school community in schools. And parents raised concerns, again, back to several members of the committee, that students are needing to meet minimum grades from high school to middle school levels. And parents oppose these minimum grades, that because they appear to reward students who are not really dedicating their best efforts to their education, and that they get a minimum grade of fifty or fifty-five, assuming they participate, show up and participate. They take a test no matter what grade is, depending on their degree or their five, depending on which level they're at. The educators present, again, reintroduce the issues that were around these policies to begin with, that they're justified because the minimum grades, as passed by the school committee originally, have a purpose to give these students fair opportunity to recover if they have a bad first quarter or a trimester. We all know we have attendance issues in this district, and the students' attendance is still poor that they end the first quarter or the first trimester with a grade of thirty. It's virtually impossible for them to raise that grade to a passing grade of seventy in order to be wanted in next grades. So this minimum grade is put in place so that they don't get themselves into a hole so deep that you can't recover from any failing grade. And Mr. Boulay assured us that mathematically, it still takes a tremendous amount of effort for students getting that minimum grade of fifty to still bring their class right up to a seventy point status. We also support one, like Mr. Boulay, that he asks, looks for, requires, wants to see that minimum grade policy for the accreditation of our high school. As a general rule, the subcommittee suspects the issue and there does not appear to be any interest in making any real changes to this policy at this time. So as a result, it will likely be removed from our next agenda. The next meeting will occur October twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, at four p.m. at Wunsaka Girls' School at Hamlet, Room one twenty-four, subject to remain of availability.
I, I'm concerned, you know, listening to that report. I've been concerned about homeschooling since I got on this committee. We run a stamp, as a matter of fact, we do it again tonight. We run a stamp, kids going to homeschool. Where we have no proof of this, we don't know if they're being taught because they're supposed to be taught. We don't know if the grades they're getting aren't really well deserved because they're being given by the parents. There are no tests or assessments given to these students. We don't know if they're going to school so many hours a day or, or what's going on. And I, I, whatever we can do, it seems to me that, I don't know if this is a right issue, I don't know what issue it is, but it seems unfair to me that our students that go to school have to meet all kinds of requirements, both attendance, they gotta get on a, just to get a attendance day, get on a bus, be on a bus for a long time. They gotta do a lot of work, they gotta do homework, they constantly add it. And then they take assessments and they give grades. We don't see that, right? You don't have any idea what goes on in homeschooling. So I would think, I would hope that the subcommittee is gonna be kind of rigorous when it looks at the involvement of home schooled children in our schools. Because frankly, if they're gonna be homeschooled, they're a lot of being homeschooled. Why they come back is beyond me. Or even being allowed to, of course, or we can't even make sure that attendance, that we know they're here. And we don't, we can't track them, or it's an incomplete tracking. Then we assume that we tracked one, I guess we got them all. So I would hope that the subcommittee is gonna take a hard look at this. In terms of the minimum grades, I find that unfair as well. We have students that work hard and really do the work and get a fifty or a sixty. They've learned, they work hard, but just to give somebody a fifty or a sixty when they don't show up, well, that seems very unfair, again and again. And I'm sad that that's not gonna be on our subcommittee agenda, because I think this really needs to be addressed. To say that, well, a child who doesn't show up can't catch up. No kidding, they can't catch up. First day of college, what are you told? You better show up to class, because if you don't show up to class, there's a good chance you're gonna fail. If you don't show up, you will fail. And that's what happens to a lot of students in their first semester. It's brand new life, I guess, freedom from my parents, I'm finally away from home, or I get to commute, and I don't go to class, so I'm distracted, and I fail. It seems to me that in our school system, if we're so worried about the graduate, that we should be working on the attendance rate harder than we are. And I know we are working on that, but to, to give a minimum grade, to me, it just doesn't make sense to somebody who is not working at all, at all. Because if I'm not going to school, and this Blaze is going to school, and I get a fifty, and she worked hard, and she got a fifty, well, gee, I guess, I don't have to go, I'm gonna get my fifty, and she may think the same. Well, should I go? I'll get a fifty anyway. So I would like to see this addressed somehow. I don't know what we can do to that. Because that's all right. If you earn a zero, you get a zero. And if you're gonna do the work, and the teachers who are working hard for the students that are in their classes, they're assigning grades to assessments and projects for kids who are working hard, but yet you're allowed to just give a passing grade or even a failing grade that allows students to catch up. I'm missing, I must be, I must be missing it. I just don't think it's correct. That's my two cents.
The one thing Mr. Boulay talked to us about is that it's not a question of grades ultimately, it's a question of credits. And students have to earn their credits. And if they have a zero on the first quarter, there's absolutely no way they're gonna have credits. And yet that student's gonna still be in the school, no wonder they're gonna fail for the year. Not always, not always, but some of those students may be behaving problems because of that. So I, I, I think what this rule really, which I agree with, by the way, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do agree with keeping it. It's been part of my educational life for decades to do, it's part of all the schools I've been with, because if you want to give the student a chance. Now, if they, they get a fifty first quarter, they get a fifty second quarter, but that's, you, you gave them a chance. You can't do anything farther. But I, I, I think we have to at least give them a chance.
I, I look at-
Like grades are different today. Grades are different today than many, many years ago. And it's really a question of credits. And, well, I'm a bit repeat myself, I don't want to do that, but I would have to disagree. I think there's good sound educational policy. Maybe not good public relations policy, but sound public, sound educational policy. I believe to give the student the chance.
Let me ask you this, how do you get a zero credit? What do you do if you show up to class? How do you get zero credits? Especially if you work hard, teacher knows you're working hard, but you just can't get it. We're not talking about that student, we're talking about the ones that don't show up. That, I, it seems to me that's the kind of student that will get zero credits, they're not here. Am I missing it? If you're not here, then why should you carry that student to the second semester if you can't get that student to come to class?
I, I think part of the argument is that if that student continues not to show up, they're gonna fail, whether they fail with a fifty or a twenty. What we're looking at is, we're looking at the student that maybe didn't show up. Maybe for whatever reason, didn't commit him or herself, but then they start to, the second sem, the second quarter, the second semester, they start to. And if, if that student had a grade of a twenty to thirties, there, there's, there's really no chance, once they turn it around, for them to get the credit. The student that continues to not do anything, they're gonna fail regardless, whether they fail with fifty or they fail with ten. They're, they're gonna fail. It's those students that, when they do turn it around, when they do come to school, when they do, you know, commit themselves to, to studying, they do have a chance. And, and in some cases, and I know, you know, I've had conversations with, with Mr. Boulay and other administrators from the high school, that there, those, those students are there where they, you know, they, they, they still come to school. There's no chance for them to pass, but they're, they're just sort of wreaking havoc. And, not in every case, but in, but in some cases, if the student sees that, okay, I, I'm putting an effort to turn it around, and the fact that I've, you know, my lowest grade is now a fifty, I have a chance if I'm starting to get seventies and I'm starting to get eighties, that, that's, that's the argument on the other side of that.
I get the argument, but it's not earned at all. If I get a fifty and a fifty in the third quarter, I go, well, I'll slide. So you carry them, person might be disrupted, might not be, disrupted the other students, and goes on to fail. Maybe should have failed earlier because if you knew what was gonna happen again. And I, and I do assume, these particular students are rare. They're rare indeed. Because I would think that the majority of our students are working hard and they're getting grades. I'm just saying to have a policy that, a, a, a policy that gives those credits or gives those grades, I just don't think that's right. That's my opinion.
If I may provide a little further comment on the minimum grade question. I was one of those parents that did before this subcommittee when they approved these minimum grades, opposing them, to see, to me, it seemed we were rewarding laziness. If a student, if my student, my son, Cal, was struggling at school and worked really hard and gets a fifty, and some kid just shows up, writes their name on a test, gets a fifty, that didn't seem fair to me. And I, I see your point, and I understand your point, but if you send a girl a-
Absolutely.
This year, I was invited to observe some portfolio presentations at the high school. We had asked Mr. Boulay at the meeting whether or not we could provide us numbers of our home students. This actually helped. He couldn't, but again, anecdotally, he knows students that it helped. This particular student, it was very interesting to listen to. He came from another country, learned English, gave a vial at the high school. He was very, very proud of the fact that he was graduating as a member of the National Honor Society. And he self-admitted to us, you know, this language, that freshman year, he really wasn't a good student. And they said, what changed? And he said, I decided to get my league together. And that's the student he's designed for, the student like that. If we're talking about a student that doesn't care, they're gonna get a fifty every quarter, they're gonna fail, and they're not gonna get the credit, and they're not gonna have enough credits to graduate. This is in place for that rare student who decides he can win. I can go somewhere, I can do something if I apply myself, and it's not gonna be easy for her to come. How easy is it for me to raise a fifty after a seventy? Depending on how many tests you have, it would be very, very difficult. Depending on how many tests you have, it could be very, very difficult. And that's where it comes from. And I, I understand the concern, but we have to look for that student too. And it's not all about graduating, it's not all about that either. I also want to clarify that if you're saying students aren't showing up, if someone doesn't show up for a test, they don't get a 50, they get an NS, if they didn't complete the work, that's different. They don't get an automatic 50 if they don't show up, they only get an automatic 50 if they show up and they actually get a 20 or a 49. There's so much to get that 70 to get the credit.
Right, I agree.
So, I just want to do that, getting global evidence, and it does help some kids. And if I can go back and look into one question for one second, I want you and everyone to be aware that if you miss homeschool through grade 12, you do not get a Sock of High School diploma. Our policy provides that if you want to graduate and get a Sock of High School diploma, you must return and matriculate in Sock of High School for year 12. And, I don't know how much is forced, but it does also provide that in order to matriculate in year 12, you have to pass the assessments in the core courses for grade 11, which means you have to be able to demonstrate that you are taught with fidelity the curriculum through grade 11, you can have the same grade 11 assessments that our students, you have to the same rigor before you can attend a grade 12. And you can't just slide into Algebra II, you have to demonstrate to guidance that you're ready for Algebra II, to prove that you understand Algebra I. So we do have those standards, but in particular, I want you to be aware, they're not working out of the high school diploma, or with Sock of High School diploma, when you have a high school in year 12.
I understood that, and I knew that, but it's still frustrating, because you, you see some requests, and we've seen them over the years, that you may have a family of six kids, four kids, three kids, with a spread of classes that are being homeschooled. And that, to me, is my problem. Because unless they have a group, and some did, some do, it works well, but in many cases, I don't know if you have it, one student that asks to be homeschooled in May or April, that doesn't make sense to me, but we robustly approve it, as long as they meet requirements, or they've got a curriculum that is approved.
And I'm too worried about that, whether these students are receiving the following curriculum that we approved, which is about, we don't know what the grades are, we're monitoring who's giving them, and A on everything. They could falsify attendance records, they say, we are here every day, since homeschool is home, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee that the school is occurring while they're at home. One of the principals, who is president now, made a page in another anecdotal case of a student who presented age-appropriate for grade four, and indicated to the principal that she had been in school for two years of her entire life, two weeks. And the principal said to me, I don't know if she was homeschooled, I didn't have her first, I have her approved, but she's certainly not appropriate for grade four. What do I do with a student like that? You certainly have students that come back with history. In that situation, they're homeschooled, age-appropriate for grade six, but academically not ready for grade six. Those are all concerns around her school, if they're right, Mr. Buley.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, policies, subcommittee, or is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll have the CLAC update. Mrs. Kaviskas, I understand that you've got, you've got minutes, even though you're away, you've got minutes.
Thank you.
And I'll let you speak, and I'll add if there's anything I need to add.
I was away, I was absent for the last CLAC meeting, first one I missed, third one I missed. But essentially, my daughter went and took notes on my behalf. So, last CLAC meeting was held on October 3, 2019, under old business. Parents' work meetings were scheduled for the next three months. The discussion was, discussion was had about the National Alliance Society of Out of District Students, that the new bylaws to include them had been approved for the high school, they needed Sock of Education Department Authority to come before the school committee shortly, and that the out of district school information, out of district schools receiving information for eligible students, and students could be completing applications. I'm not going to go back to that, address that attorney right off there. With regard to Chromebooks, they're already distributed, left to be distributed at the high school, and they were starting to press determining how to provide what systems of technology we needed in the classrooms. And they were also going to begin distribution to out of district students this week, Sock of High School students who take them home, and they were given information on how to do their portfolio electronically, and it's the same 10 baseline for all high school students. The dog therapy program will begin in about two weeks with candle or salad above lock down. The attorney has approved it, all the plans are set to go, parents will be asked to sign permission slips, it's going to start slow, in one room at first, and an example was the other student struggling with reading, might be pulled to the corner and asked to move to the dog. I wrote this evaluation plan, as a big regular case manager, all of the submitted for all students in special ed services. They're now in class by class, and student by student basis, everyone has access to the plans, including the front office, teachers and principals, girls will be conducted, hand-selected staff are in place, and there will be backups under the command, the students will be ready, the law staff assigned to them. Under new business, ongoing issues around communication with families regarding special ed resources continues to be an issue. Does the Sock of Education Department provide resources online, or do you have the training? And it's in clear form that school psychologists and social workers can provide information on outside services. Do parents know that we have parent liaison in our schools? Do parents grow the LEAs who are not having peer resources, that's supposed to be parent liaison? Is there a different information happening provided for parents of children on alternative assessment, as to the resources and agencies available to assist them? What are all the materials to be provided, incoming pre-K, the ambulance, especially the expanded pre-K program? Separate orientations before the first IEP meeting to answer parents' questions and provide refreshers to those who need it? And that RICHTEN has an old book which has been updated with information in this regard. Can, we discussed it at a prior meeting, canons were definitely received, now that the beginning is fully completed, it's all endorsed. Notice that that, like, their child's case manager is, and contact information is given to reach out to, that is supposed to be held on sometime this month. There were questions about whether or not the information was available in Spanish and minority area, that it was apparent residence, or, or it was. And that has been an ongoing issue at CLAC, we often have parents that come, speaking no English, and I had a, I had a dad for years and years and years, his children can have IEPs, and he used to come and translate through those parents. And there's issues around, he's a programmer for IEPs, he's indicated that another agency that does teleconference in via Skype, more access to more languages, including American language. Earlier, you mentioned workers, there's some issues about whether or not to provide sufficient information to parents who might need interpreters. Information was provided to parents on bullying workshops being run by RICHTEN, you can register for them, through RICHTEN, there are three different dates, three different locations. The first one is tomorrow at Blackstone Valley Prep. The chair asked parents to attend the next meeting on the coast, Duestro, Londo, Tarn School, at the Harris Elementary Library at 10:24 to 6:00 PM, if we have a book to the meeting. There were also issues about a lack of person with the tools for schools to create family connections, maybe that would be the parent liaison role, there's a description of what the parent liaison did, questions about how to bring parents closely with school community, the school has a parent liaison, and like any person who can assist, parents should be encouraged to contact the liaison. We provided comments, Mr. Chair, about NHS, especially the students being excluded out of the old bylaws, the facilities director is working higher, transportation issues like late buses, and they are especially impactful of special ed, as well as regular ed kids alike. School committee is doing as much for a window, and if there's no certainty whether they stop, I'd like you all to attend the 10 to 10:24 meeting. Parents raised a lot of comments about being denied access to after-school programs, mainly because of communication issues, which is all of what I understand a lot of this around communication issues. Parents are not getting paid for the internet collapse, and I can attest to that regarding NHS issue. How can we assure that more kids can go? Information was provided, if your child has a one-to-one or one-to-one, provided at such a X, maybe your child will be able to participate. More likely to have it, a question about no unified sports at middle school level, despite the northern, in northern reality, despite weather and log, we didn't felt to get a teacher to volunteer, do this for, parents are not getting emails from the schools, cannot get access to Skyward. Some of that, I believe, is one of the issues that can be resolved, and parents will aren't encouraged to have those issues, to reach doctors, doctor P, if it's not at some school level, parents should be encouraged to create a list of the issues that they're having, glad to doctor P. Sock of Education Department's policies, they want all special ed kids to get as much as general ed kids do, there needs to be more communication, parents about these activities, transition, continue to tell parents if they have issues as to having a ride for the child, parents feel alone in here, no one is there for them, parents feel over there, no one is out in here, parents get moved, you can't bring your children. We're always teachers who get to go home at any day. The ball often is dropped on fun stuff for special ed kids, they're being excluded, it's frustrating, and needs to be worked on together. There needs to be work done, saying how better notices to special ed parents about these issues. And information to parents, they can contact with the directors of these issues, and then with regards to the field trip policy, there's an issue being, as to whether or not field trips are being denied, and the parents were sure that we are currently improving every field trip, that no child would be denying participation, as a result of the inability to be in the law of a parent, which a child can't be denied participation. Again, I wasn't present, so I'm sure.
Sure.
My daughter took great advice.
Kathryn gets a minute plus for a minute, my goodness, I was very wild. We were there. The one thing I'd like to emphasize, again, is the lack, is the apparent lack of communication, effective communication between school and parents. They're not, they have not been getting information timely about activities, about what's going on, and so they don't feel a part of the school process. And frankly, I agree with the parents that voiced those moments. I think it really sounded at all that it's time to stop this and to come up with reasons why certain materials are available, but they won't reach the parents, I think. You know, we're dealing with this three ways, you spoke about it in, in, we were there, just thinking about it now, Dr. Buley, you've got it on the agenda, this is very important. As a matter of fact, we spoke a little bit about that today at the birthday committee. The communication between teachers, administrators, and parents, that communication is vital. If that doesn't spur more attendance, I don't know what will, because if you don't feel part of the process, how can you, how can you evolve? And how can you motivate them? All I know is the parents were right. They said, basically, they have to be there, because it's their kids. They will not let these kids fail, and they will support and go to every meeting that they need to, to support their children, while we are elected, so I don't do those meetings. Us around the table are hired, and that's our jobs, to do that, so you go to the meetings. The parents are not getting anything, they get pain in the butt, sweat, tears, et cetera, because they are fighting for their child to be involved in the school process. And I think it's time to remain to their requirements, remain to their needs, and make sure that communications are strong. So I really appreciate the comments that were made after the agenda, and I think we go from there. Mrs. Kaviskas, so I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, and see what I can report, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next, we'll go into the Facilities Subcommittee, report, we had meeting this past week, this week, on October 8. I know our facilities director was there, would you like to take here this report? This is Torriani.
So we discussed the issues we are experiencing with the heating systems, and trying to be proactive this year in terms of making sure that all the heating is properly running, or whether approaches.
Could you speak into the microphone, please, so I can see.
Is that better?
Yes.
So, we're being proactive this year, making sure that all the heating units are up and running prior to the heating season, taking full effect. We did not deploy window boiler project, the windows were installed, there's some modification we're looking at in terms of airflow in classrooms. We're also looking at the heating system there is up and running, and boilers. We reviewed the Brown and Trust parking lot survey that was conducted a couple of weeks ago, on any areas of parking lots or crosswalks that need to be addressed in terms of cracks or repairs that need to be reviewed. Including the pre-K classroom project, we're implementing modifications due to the regulations from DCYF. We discussed the drainage at both Harris Elementary School, along with Holke Elementary School. We talked and discussed about the elementary playground projects, which we still need to provide supplemental approval on, in terms of proceeding with those projects. And we had a brief discussion about initiating a budget capital plan, where we will come back some time later this calendar year without an initial proposal. In addition to the facilities update, we also had a discussion regarding transportation, which was discussed prior to the meeting here, about late times with the busing, where it's still working with the bus company, they're completely control of drivers, they're going to invest, trying to improve the times. Oh, we did inform them that our patients are aware of them, and that they need to offer a final solution, very soon. We explored some other options in terms of transportation. And then, I think we did address the hospital safety and security review, and we updated the facilities committee on the annual SRO meeting we have every year, the police change and doctrine, and just expressing what our goals are. That was your call.
Mr. Torriani, the boiler situation at all the schools, I know you were in the process of testing that day, are they all up and running, or will that be next week?
They're still in the process of turning them all on, making sure they're all weeks, sure they're able to pressureize the current project, so.
So, that'll be in this week, that they'll be turned on?
Yes, I believe they're through most of the elementary schools, middle school, high school, they were tested a few weeks ago, just haven't turned it back on yet, haven't joined the training, but.
How about Savoy?
Savoy, the boilers were installed, and they were tested, the new boilers, over the part we did this summer, and they were inspected, and people were building official, so we'll be ready to turn them on by the time of.
Would you, would you normally turn them on?
Right about the first, second week of October, depending on what the temperature for buildings, the older buildings tend to run at a warmer temperature.
Just to tell you, once, do them later, but the temperatures are going against you as an area, it's cold, maybe it's just the stream on, I don't know.
Our chief request was a little first, it's comparative, but.
Anyone have any comments, questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, Facilities Subcommittee reports, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll turn to Health and Wellness, next meeting day.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Committee will be meeting on October 21st, and Monday at 4:00 in this building. So I would encourage all our members to come back and join us, this will be our second meeting of the year. And the agenda for this particular meeting is to finalize our new Health and Wellness policy, have the committee finalize it, so we can bring it to the full school committee. And the second item of our agenda is going to be the examination of a Health and Wellness assessment that all the schools completed before the school year, and it's important for us to spend some time in our meeting to examine that assessment. And that will be the content in the agenda for our meeting, October 21st.
Excellent, thank you, my chief. Let's go on to new business. I thank Mrs. Kaviskas for helping me, for drafting the motion. So I'll make a motion to approve one-year, one-year term contracts for, for the following non-human director positions. Turn it over, and these are in no particular order. Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Director of Literacy, Entitled One, Director of People Services, Special Education Director, Director of Administration and Finance, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent into the Committee, and to authorize the Chair to execute the contracts on behalf of the district. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Pirokow.
Chairman Borjett.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Against the unanimous consensus, we've got valuable assistance. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of the Insaco High School Assistant Principal, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the School Committee.
Hold me a second. Hang a second.
Of course.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the School Committee. I am very pleased to recommend Mr. Jeffrey Giat for the position of Assistant Principal at the Insaco Area Career and Technical Center. Mr. Giat joins the Insaco Education Department with over seven years of administrative experience and over nine years of teaching experience in Rhode Island. Most recently, Mr. Giat was the principal of Deering Middle School in West Warwick. There he worked with over 1,100 students and 120 staff members, including building leadership. He was seen to be a very effective school administrator during his tenure during that time. Concurrently, he works with the College Board, serving in a variety of roles in the area of curriculum design, instruction, as a facilitator for educator professional development. Mr. Giat holds a master's degree in secondary school administration from Providence College and a bachelor of education in secondary education and mathematics. He is highly qualified for the Rhode Island Department of Education Regulations as a building-level administrator. Based on Mr. Giat's education and work experience, I highly recommend him for the position of Assistant Principal at the Insaco Area Career and Technical School. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments, thoughts?
Three.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
Congratulations. Welcome, and good luck and hope. I'm sure everything's going well.
What does this look like?
Looking forward to working with you. Dr. McGee, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have my report here.
Start to take.
It's a very thick report, and I promise I will not be too worried. So I'm, I'm gonna, oh, you know, the respect I, yeah, I'm telling you. The first item that I'd like to talk about, I hand, I give each committee member a, I hand out, it's the data in your backyard. So on September 20th, I attended the annual meeting at the Chaplain Perez Center here in Insaco. And here it is. The presenter was Stephanie Yeller, who is from the Rhode Island Kids Count, and many other administrators from the school department attended with me. So then the data in your backyard is specific to Insaco, and it focused on four main areas, family and community, health, safety, and education. So I'm not going to go through the entire packet, but I'm just going to point out certain categories and just give you some basic information. I'm gonna start on page five at the top, child of poverty, unfortunately. We all know that Insaco, unfortunately, is, is number one in the state when it comes to our children living in extreme poverty. The definition of a child or a family that lives in extreme poverty is for a family of three, the income level is $10,160 a year, and for a family of four, it's $12,733 per year. So in Insaco, unfortunately, 19% of our children live in extreme poverty. If you go to page seven, and we've talked about this unfortunately too many times, the number of homeless children we have here in our district. Last year, in 2018, 129 students were identified as being homeless. Now, that definition includes doubling up in which families, because they can't find the means to support themselves, whether it be employment or what have you, are doubling up and living with another family. Other cases are we have, we have students, and Dr. Holt can attest to this, I don't know if she's actually been out to see families that are living in motels. We have families that are living out of their pot. So unfortunately, that, that number hasn't gone down very much over the years, and you know, that, that's, that's the bad news. The good part of this community is, is as we talked about earlier this evening, organizations like SEDEXO provide food to, you know, many of these families, to at least provide them with, you know, a nutritious meal over the weekend. The bottom of page seven, School Breakfast Program here in Insaco, 34% of our students participate regularly in the breakfast program. We now, if you compare us to other, the three other urban core districts, we are in a, in a close third to Providence. And basically what this is, is that many, many more than 34% of our students are qualified for free reduced breakfast, or actually for free breakfast, I should say, universal breakfast. But this, this is an indication of the students that, that actually come in in the morning and they, they put in there their pin number, so it calculates those students. SEDEXO is a running number percentage, just to be the percentage of students that are actually taking it. One of the things that we've done over the last few years, and the middle school principals are here this evening, at both middle schools, we've provided opportunities for our students that are coming in in the form of kiosks. So there are, there are breakfast kiosks on each floor, so if a student comes in and they're late, they can grab, you know, a to-go breakfast and bring it into their classroom. So that's, that's a change that we've made to try to reach more students, at least at the middle school level. At our elementary level, we have a variety of opportunities ranging from breakfast in the classroom to that type of, of kiosk that they have in the foyer of some of the elementary schools. If you go to page 28, at the top, the title there is Children of Incarcerated Parents. And if you go down to the below where it says on September 30th, 2018, that first bullet, the Adult Correctional Institution, ACI, has, as of on September 30th, 2018, 95 incarcerated people at the ACI were known to, to have been in Insaco as their last residents, which would indicate that those, those parents who are incarcerated have children that are in Insaco, that are attending Insaco, that are public schools.
Do we know who those kids are?
Uh, do we know where they are?
There are, but.
So what, what, the way we can typically find out are the social workers at the schools, the guidance counselors will often reach out to students, and our, our, our social workers have a really good rapport with our students and with the parents, so they may not know where the 85 of them are, but they, I would guess that they probably know where a good number of them are, what school they're attending. And when they're made aware of that, they obviously make sure that they try to reach out to those students to make sure that they're supported in school, because naturally, if, you know, if you have an incarcerated parent, that brings a great amount of trauma into a little, a little one that, that comes into, into school. So they, they really do a great job of trying to indicate who those children are and provide the supports to them. The slide below that, page 14, is Child Abuse and Elect. And, you know, unfortunately, in Insaco, 35.7 per 1,000 children are the victims of abuse and neglect here in Insaco. And if you look at the other, the four core communities, the average is 21.5 per thousand. So we're much higher than the, than the other three or four districts in the mid-providence, Central Falls, and Kentucky. And if you go across and you look at the remainder of the state, you know, you're going to 11.2 per 1,000. So unfortunately, again, we, we have many, many children that are, that are exposed to abuse and neglect.
Just, just a question, as we're going along, 35.7 per thousand, so if we have 6,000 kids, we got about 210, is that how I read this?
Yes.
210 kids. Does the school district know who these kids are? Because this is the Kids Count.
Right.
Do we know?
So we don't know the specific names, but again, going back to the incarcerated, students of incarcerated parents, I, I would, I would say that our social workers probably have some pretty good information, that they, they don't know and they, they can't necessarily know every single student.
You're saying if we're gonna help, you know, we've got the slide right here, I think the intent is to take the 200 kids and try to find who they are, and what can we do to help them?
Sure, sure. And, and I think that's something that I know that that's something that our social workers and psychologists and guidance counselors have to tell. Kids talk. They, they, you know, they confide in, in adults, you know, especially if they feel a connection to an adult in, in our schools. And that's one pathway of determining who's in the dark. And I really think that we do a very good job of, you know, of knowing who they are and trying to provide the, the supports in the building and outside the building as well, because not only do we provide, you know.
Now, how do we know?
I'm just saying. Well, we don't, we don't know specifically who they are.
Well, that's my, well, that's.
We, we don't, we don't have a list, but what I'm saying is, when they come forward and they confide in adults that something's happening, we also have, unfortunately, I receive more than I would wish to receive, reports that, that our staff make here in the district to DCYF. When a student comes in, they doubt bruises. When a student comes in and they, you know, say that last night, you know, their, their stepfather or their, you know, their, their mother's boyfriend hit them, we immediately, 24 hours reach out to DCYF and notify them. But we also take, take, take stock of that with intention with our social workers, so they know who these students are.
So now our social workers will then work with DCYF with these kids?
So, so we don't, we don't work directly with DCYF. We report to DCYF, but we work with the students internally within the school.
Okay. All right.
Dr. McGee, also this year, there's been a lot of professional development in the district for social emotional learning. And an aspect of social emotional learning is to deal with troubled students. And hopefully, some of the students, we may not know, but they could be, you know, they may be helped by, by some of the techniques of social emotional learning.
That's, that's, that's true. They, they, they're, they're learning through the professional development, sort of what signs to look for in their students, so that they can, you know, either go to the social worker at the school and have a conversation, or they can, you know, have a direct conversation with the student, or can, you know, reach, reach directly out to, to the family. So. If you go to page 16, Head Start and State Pre-K, 51% of all children, 50% of low-income children in Insaco were enrolled in either Head Start or State Pre-K during the year before kindergarten, and that rate is much higher than the state rate. And again, this is last year, so this year, you know, as, as the committee knows, Mrs. Morell has been instrumental in working with Insaco Head Start to increase the number of seats for our children here.
Right.
In Insaco. So that, I expect that that number is only going to improve as we move along with the expansion of our Head Start and Pre-K program here in the district. Page 17, the percentage of K through 12 students that are receiving special education services in Insaco, that percentage is 25%. Of our students in grades K through 12 are receiving some, some form of special education services, and that, that's just sort of FYI. We talked about this, we even talked about this today during our Curriculum Subcommittee and these results. Now, this, this is an interesting percentage, because when, when RIDE comes in and they, you know, they do the audit of our special education department, we just had one that was conducted last year, they, they're, they try to, their, their goal is for, is for school districts to get that percentage down as low as possible. Now, that's, that's all fine and dandy, but we have to be aware of, and I know Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Morell and the other special education staff at the district are well aware, if, if you have children that qualify for special education services, we're not gonna not qualify them because the state, Rhode Island is saying that our percentage should be lower. We're not, you're doing a disservice to our students. Now, in saying that, I'm, I'm not looking to increase to, you know, 30, 40, 50%, that's not what it's saying, but it, it's, it's an interesting argument that, that they made in trying to get the number, the percentage down, the numbers down. If, if you have students that qualify for special services, then it's our duty to make sure we provide those services to our students. And yes, 25% is high, but, you know, we're not going to turn students away because we're looking to get that percentage down.
As I recall, what we saw a couple of months ago, or whatever it was, in the last year, I mean, we were, we were at 27 and change. So that, this, this number is a lower number. So it can be hard, actual, actuality, because it was like 27, I think it was 27.8, 27.6. It's not, it's not much harder than that.
You know, and that's not to say that when, when a student has an IEP, the goal is, if they have an IEP, to ultimately get them off of the IEP. But, but we, we wouldn't take the IEP away just because we want to hit a certain quota percentage.
I don't know.
You know, we, when, when students are taken off of the IEP, it, it's, it's done with the IEP team, parent data is, is, you know, analyzed, so that we make sure that when that does happen, the students provide, still provide the supports, you know, such as RTI across the, across the district. So, so in those cases where the student's IEP ends, we're not just going out and, you know, saying good luck. So if you guys support services in place to, to support them, on the.
Dr. Sullivan, comment on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's partly because of RTI that we've had some of our numbers go down, and I also wanted to say that when we do dismiss a child from service, we always make it very clear to the student and to the family that if the student does start to experience more problemization, we give them return to teams, so we can look at what we can do to help them.
Excellent.
And also, isn't it kind of ironic that RIDE is telling us to get our numbers down? When the law of special education services is directed by state law, is that correct? I know Massachusetts state law directs special education.
Yeah, the bigger problem to me, honestly, right now, is that we're being told that the number of our students on ultimate assessment cannot exceed 1%. We're currently at about 2.5%. And, and I think it's absolutely ridiculous when I look at some of these students to think that they belong on, not on ultimate, but there's no way that these kids can pass the state assessments. And not only that, when I go into these classrooms, when I look at some of these students and I think I'm gonna take them out of this classroom, where they are learning life skills, and we're gonna put them in an algebra class, it, it makes no sense to me. So that's another area where we're really kind of fighting with RIDE.
I agree with you, I mean, it's not, that's federal law.
The what?
The 1% happens federal law.
And it's federal law?
It's federal law. What's happening now is because the state is above 1%, they may lose some federal funding unless they can get the numbers down. So there's a few, usually the, the big districts like Providence and Insaco are quite a bit above. We have, I think this one district that has something like under 1% of the, I mean, I'm here, I think they're like very close to 0%, they're almost nobody. But, you know, kind of being on the district and the needs, I don't, I don't see how we can get it. We might maybe get down a little bit, but we're certainly not gonna get under 1%.
Dr. McGee? If you go down to the slide at the bottom of page 17.
Yes.
Third grade reading skills. So based on the 2018 VASTAS results, which two years ago, 17% of our third graders are meeting expectations. seventeen percent of our third graders are meeting expectations in eighth grade, and, you know, it's unacceptable. And we, you know, just, just, when you, when you, when you look at the urban cores, we're lower than province, that's unacceptable to me. And I, I, I wish I had, you know, something to put in the water right now that could bring those up to, you know, to a respectable percentage. I can tell you that none of us are satisfied, when I say us, I'm talking about the central office, you know, Dr. Holt, Mrs. Tereso, Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Morell, Ms. Gia, who's our English language learner coordinator, but I can tell you that we're, we're not going to stop working hard with our teachers, with our administrators, and with our students and our parents. We, you know, we started, we had lunches today at the verden heights, we were going around, myself and Mrs. Morell, Dr. Holt, and Mrs. Tereso. We've been, we've started today at the verden heights having curriculum conversations with, with teachers and trying to elicit feedback from them, just in terms of what's working with the curriculum, what areas are they and their students having difficulty with. And I think that's, that's the beginning, because we, we need to make sure that we are listening to what our teachers have to say and we know what's happening in classrooms, because it starts with the start. You know, we, we unfortunately have a lot of obstacles to overcome, abusive neglect, incarcerated parents, you know, the, the, the list goes on and on. But I've said this before and I'm gonna continue to say it, it's not an excuse. I'm not going to make excuses and say our, our percentages are low because our students can't do this. Our students are just as capable of any other student in, in, in the state, certainly if we compare ourselves to the three other urban core districts. So we're gonna continue, we have a new reading program that was implemented last year, and we're gonna continue working hard providing professional development to our teachers and our staff. These, these numbers have to go up, that's the bottom line. And again, the buck stops here, and I'm the one ultimately responsible for this. And this is not good enough. Hopefully, last year's RYE test scores, when they come out, we'll see improvement. So the, the bad news is, this is where we are. Hopefully, there, there's, there's brighter, there are brighter times ahead. We can compare two years ago to last year and see growth across the district. If you go to the next page, page eighteen, math skills, third grade and eighth grade, you know, sixteen percent of our third graders and seven percent of our eighth graders. I'm not gonna repeat the same thing I just said, but, but it's unacceptable, and it has to change, and I'm not going to use excuses. A direct correlation to low performance on standardized tests, chronic early absence. As, as the committee knows, we've been working very hard over the last four years to try to work with our, our parents, work with our students, work with our families to decrease the percentage of chronically absent students, to increase our average daily attendance in our schools. Twenty-four percent of our students in grades K through three were chronically absent in year seventeen eighteen. As you know, we just talked to magistrate Wallace from the Rhode Island Family Court. We have a truancy program that's coming to our elementary grades, we're focusing on our primary grades, K one, two, and we're hoping that we're going to see some, some good results from that. But again, you know, our administrators and our teachers and our staff are working extremely hard to try to get our students in school regularly. But I'm gonna say this publicly, we can't do it alone. The, our, our parents have got to ensure that their students, that their children are attending school regularly. We reach out to them constantly to provide supports. But as far as I'm concerned, ultimately, it comes down to a parent. Especially in grades K through three, twenty-four percent is unacceptable, again. And we can't do it alone. We can't do it alone. Our staff are working very hard to reach out to parents, but again, our parents have to take the initiative and be parents, and make sure their kids are coming to school. If they don't do that, we, we can, we can stand on our heads, and this percentage is not going to go down. Middle and high school, it doesn't get better. When you get to the middle and the high school, that's more on the students. Middle school, parents still, high school, students. Thirty-three percent of our middle school students are chronically absent, forty-seven percent of our high schools students are chronically absent. And, and again, you know, it's, it's not for lack of effort. Our administrators and our, and our staff, our support staff make phone calls, reach out. Now, having said that, we also have to make sure, part of this responsibility is ours as well. We have to make sure that we're providing settings for our students to feel safe, to feel comfortable in our students, and for them, quite frankly, to be engaged. It's, it's a two-way street here. We can't just say, "You've gotta come to school." We've gotta make it so that they feel like when they come to school, there are positive relationships here between our staff, and that there, our students are not just sitting in classrooms where they're being given, you know, ditto sheets, and it's, it's a, it's a teacher-centered classroom and not a student-centered classroom. So we've gotta work hard at this as well. This is something that, that we were aware of, and we are gonna continue working with our teachers to make sure that they're providing environments for our students to want to come to school. Again, thirty-three percent and forty-seven percent are unacceptable. Lastly, our high school graduation rate. So this says seventy-two, and I'm gonna take every percentage I can get.
It's seventy-three.
It's seventy-three. So, so what I will say is, we, we're up from not fifty-eight percent to fifty-nine percent. So since two thousand and fourteen, we, we've made very good strides, I believe, in increasing that, that graduation rate. Now, in, in all, in all honesty, part of that fifty-nine percent was, was the way we were monitoring students and the data that we were providing to the Department of Education. Over the years, and he's, he's sitting out here, Mr. Boule at the high school, and he didn't do it single-handedly, but, but he was responsible for a lot of this. Right now, we're in a position where the correct data is being reported to RYE, and really, Mr. Boule takes a lot of credit, I'm gonna give him a lot of credit for that. He's worked tirelessly over the years to make sure that, that we're not missing students and we're, we're just making sure that that, that correct data is getting to the department. So, but I will say this, that the state average is, is eighty-four percent. If you go back to two thousand and eight, the state average was about seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-four percent, and with Sockit, sixty percent. So if, if you track longitudinally from two thousand and eight, the Sockit has actually increased more than the state average, albeit, you know, three percentage points, what we have. And, and I'm gonna begin to say that since two thousand and fourteen, we have gone up. And, you know, it's, it's my expectation and my hope that when last year's numbers come out, they're gonna come out sometime in the late fall or the winter, I'm hoping to see an increase of seventy-three percent. So, you know, and we've also provided opportunities for our students, the committee knows that we, we know from the P M school. And I, I gotta say that in the two years that the P M school has been in existence, we've had about fourteen or fifteen students that have graduated over the course of those two years that otherwise would have been in existence that would not have graduated. So the program, and I, Mary Caprilli, who is the, one of the assistant principals of the Sockit High School, will oversee that program, Mary does a tremendous job of building relationship, relationships with those students, and she really needs to, we give it a lot of credit for the success of that program as well. So that, that's my first agenda item. I don't know if anyone has any, any questions or comments about that before I move on to the next agenda item, the next one is a lot quicker.
There's one thing I wanna just look at, you go to that page twenty, you chart the low graduate, it's high school graduation rate in two thousand and seventeen, and gives it various categories.
Yes.
Now, I, and I don't know how many children have in this category, but we see students with disabilities of thirty-nine percent. I don't know if that's a fair characterization of that student population, because we know that some of these kids could be getting a diploma if they do their requirements, but we don't because they need to transition. My, is, aren't we missing a boat here in this thirty-nine percent?
Yeah, the students that, that need transition services are going to our transition program at the high school. So they usually are in the regular high school program for four years, but then they go into the transition program for, you know, five, six, seven total years, or even eight years. So they don't get their diploma until they finish the transition program. So that way, they don't get that graduation rate.
So when I look at thirty-nine percent, I mean, I don't know whether they should be included in the category or excluded in the category, because if I'm gonna take an eighty-four percent state average and I say many of the school districts don't have the population of students with disabilities like we do.
That's correct.
If you yank that out of the stats, where do we really end up? In comparison to the vanilla eighty-four percent? That's my point, is I don't think we're measuring apples to apples when we're looking at these numbers.
No, we're not, because we've got about two-point-five percent of our kids on ultimate assessment right now. So those kids are not gonna be able to get their diploma in four or five years. They're gonna take it four years.
I'm also looking at, whether it's English learners, I'm looking at students that have issues. If you yank those out, because I'm not eighty-four percent to me, if we're comparing it to some of the suburban districts that have these problems, and they're touting how I'm graduating while one hour is actually re-improving these, these children, frankly, we peel this away. I'd like to know where we are in comparison and comparing apples to apples, because if seventy-three percent is ours with all these, these populations, pull them out to equal the Barringtons, the Burrvilles, the Cumberland's, et cetera, et cetera, seems to me, we should, all right, that's RYE's number or this is kids count's number, but what is our effective rate of graduation? And it's one of the things I'm asking for, and I'd like to know that, because we can keep slugging at it, and we will, with all our programs and all our good work with teachers and administrators, but if our statistics include numbers that others don't have, they don't have these issues, these challenges, then we should say, "All right, seventy-three percent, but if you make, if you made us comparable, this is where we are. We're as good as you are." But we're not showing that anywhere, there's no discussion of that in our district. And I'd like to see where we are. Give you the number, sure, but I'd like to see how is this, if we take some of those populations out and compare apples to apples, what's our effective graduate? Because it could be a lot better, Dr. McGee.
It could, it could.
Seems to me it would.
Yeah. When, when you, when you take the students with disabilities at thirty-nine percent, so Dr. Sullivan was talking about the students who, who are in our trans pro program. But, you know, that thirty-nine percent is not just those students, so, so it's students in that, within that thirty-nine percent are students that have I E Ps.
I agree with that.
So, so that's a piece there, it totally is, and, and we're getting, you know, whated by, by that, because as far as I'm concerned, it's not fair. We have a high percentage of students in the program, and, and it's because we're providing that service to our students, I mean, that, that's, that's a great thing that we're doing, but when you look at the graduation rate, we're, we're getting, you know...
What, what I'm suggesting is that mathematically, you pull these populations out of the calculation. We know they exist, we take care of those kids, but in, in determining what the net effective graduate is, you need to pull some of these out to see where are we? If we didn't have, if you looked at two districts, one suburban and us, where are we in comparison? If you yanked those out. And I think you're getting into a more, you'd say, "Well, you're becoming vanilla ball." Or aren't they vanilla? Isn't that what we're seeing in some of these suburban districts? I'd like to see how, how we match up. You know, we sat last year at, at an annual meeting, the school committees were complimenting, was talking about the forty-five percent rate. Bet you they don't have all we do. And I'd like to see the impact of cleaning that out to see what the number would be if we're gonna be compared to other districts, to the state average, for example. That's all, that's what I, I would like to see that, because I think we're, to get seventy-three percent with, with our population, I think it's pretty good, and it's, it's improving. But I'd still like to see what, what's the net comparative, because we've been fine to close. Always good.
Certainly, we've been discussing that for a period of time. I'll make, RYE doesn't collect the data that way. So as a result, we have to collect the data the way RYE wants to collect it. Do you have this committed to RYE? I can tell you that I personally had a discussion with Dave Sangko, who runs Ossast, who essentially is state special ed director, in particular with regard to those students, those trans pro students, and that they're being counted as not graduating after four years. And I've gone round and round with him, and the only reason they're not graduating in four years is because we're holding their diplomas so they can get those transition services. And his response was, they're trying to figure that out at RYE, the bean counters are trying to figure that out at RYE, how to pull them on that number. Well, here we are, with Mr. Boyd, that had to be last April that we started that discussion. And here we are, October, and the bean counters apparently still haven't figured it out, because those kids are in that percentage, and they shouldn't be, because they technically graduated, just happened to have their diploma.
Just made my case for you, because instead of allowing, letting, let the bean counters and providers be on their knees, how about our bean counters to determine what is that effective rate? I wanna see from our district, I know we feed them data, and they take the data, they send it to the back room without the shades, and they go, "No." If you do it that way, how about doing it our way and see where we're going down? That's all I'm suggesting, I know they, they've got their rules and rent. I wanna, I wanna, I just wanna do something instead. You're gonna do what you gotta do there, but what would our number be if we took that out? That's for us to calculate, and it's an internal calculation, it's, you can say, "Well, it doesn't fit the rules." No, but it, it also gives information to the district administrators and teachers, what kind of job are we doing, or we're comparing apples to apples? That's all I'm saying, we should do it. It can be a motivator, that's my point.
I get that, but I'm also concerned that once again, with these special education kids, I understand what your objection is. We're not excluding them from participation.
Correct.
But you're creating a false validation.
No, it's not false, it is a comparative, because right now, the comparator says you're at seventy-three percent, that you just identified... identified we have a whole population of kids that should, well, are holding back their diplomas because they've got to go through a transition period, which I agree. However, other than that, then we've gotten their diplomas and we may have some, we have another population that's English learning. We might have some kids who can't read. Can't read the test. How can you do what? They can't. How many other schools have that? Maybe not. I'd like to see it pulled out. It's not a, a fake graduation. It is an estimate, an estimate that comes out of the other districts. That's what I want. I want to see if it comes out, nothing changed, nothing changed, but I'd like to see the numbers. Because you look at some of the other districts, if you look at their, their breakdown of population, they're not going to have a location, no one's got a license. Da da. We do. So that's my, my point.
I'm sorry. That's okay. That's all right. No problem.
I get emotional with this because I know we know better based on this, our view, going to classrooms, talking to teachers, our administrators. We're weighing it down, faculty by law, but it was still weighing it down because of how they calculated.
So the next item that I'm going to talk very briefly about is I'm just going to give you some, some enrollment numbers, the committee's enrollment numbers. Our October 1st snapshot, which was actually generated on October 6th, our total enrollment, all, all rooms total enrollment, this, this number includes students that are in out-of-district placements. We are at 6,042 as compared to last year. We were at 5,998. If you go to, as I'm going to go to the next column here, students that are enrolled in our district, we are at 5,900, even 5,900, and that's up from 5,837 last year. So we have seen an increase in our October 1st enrollment numbers from last year and, which was actually, last year compared to 17, 18, 18, 19, there was a slight decrease, minimal, but by about 20 or so students. So those are our October 1st numbers, which was reported to the Department of Education. The next agenda item I have is I just wanted to briefly review with the school committee our truancy court, elementary truancy court. Recently, I met with Senator Piggard, Roger Piggard, who is our, one of our two attendance officers, and I met with Nicole Wollek and Andy Barnes, who is working for us part-time. And we discussed the parameters that we were going to be looking to, to move forward with and whether we're going to focus on just kindergarten. We decided that right now, which is, which is, which is good news, we, we don't have enough kindergarten students to, to fill that cohort that we're, that we're looking to move to truancy court with. So we're going in grades K through three. So each school, each principal is going to select approximately five or six students that, or should I say the parents of students that they're going to be reaching out to? And, and again, this is not going to be a situation where we're, we're just going to automatically give their names to the magistrate and they're going to have to appear before the magistrate. This is going to be, these are, these are families that our attendance officer is going to make contact with, try to, you know, speak to, meet with, as well as the school administration and social workers, et cetera. So that's what we're looking to start and we're going to be looking to start that in November. So we anticipate that by the end of this month, we'll be ready to go. The magistrate Paulson will be coming to our district. We are probably going to hold the truancy court in one of the two middle schools. There, there's more space, ten years of middle schools, much like we already do here for the middle school.
Sure.
Truancy court. So that will start in November. The, the last item I have for my report is strengthening communications with CILAC committee. And Mrs. Kadeskis spoke, spoke to that a little while ago. Chairman Poirier also spoke to it. So we, we had a, what I thought was a, was a very, very good CILAC meeting recently. It was, it was good because the, the parents that were attendants had an opportunity to share with us things that are going well in the district when it comes to special education. And I, I want to start by saying there, there are, there are more great things going on in the special education department in our district than there are not. And, and that's a testament to Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Morell and, and their team, administrative team, and also our, our very dedicated, committed special education teachers and support staff that are, that are in our district. So I want to start there. Having said that, there are, there were some concerns that were brought forward by, by some folks that were at the meeting around communication. And we need to do a better job of communicating to all of our parents, especially our parents of our, our students with special needs. You know, whether it's as, as simple as sending a flyer home, we need to make sure that those flyers are going to all of our classrooms, our classrooms, you know, resource classrooms, et cetera. We also, over the last few years, our principals have been doing a really nice job of sending home a weekly news email, which provides information about different things, you know, different things about what's happening at school, events, different programs that the schools are, are using. It's, 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 it's an informational email. And what we need to make sure is that parents who are not receiving those emails, we, we need to try to reach out to them and, and some of them reached out to us at that meeting to, to make sure that they are receiving those emails because in, in some instances, it, it's a situation of the parent provides the email address to the school, but the email address is put into the wrong category in the sky of the platform. So that particular one for the other night has been addressed. But again, we need to make sure that we're communicating with, with all of our, all of our families, including our, our English language learner families who don't speak English, who may not speak English. We need to make sure that we're not leaving those, those very important people out because they all make, make up our community. They're, they're all as important as, as anyone. I had a meeting this week with our principals and I reiterated with our principals that when they send communications home to families, that they, they ensure that it's going to all classrooms, ensure that, that the emails that they have, you know, through the secretaries in their main office, those emails are as updated as possible. It, it, it's sometimes incumbent upon the, the parent, if their email changes, to notify the school, so the school is aware of that. But, but just in, in general, I think that we, we need to do a better job of, of communicating across the board and that's something that we're going to work on, we're going to continue to work on. And having these types of conversations and communication with parents is critical because, you know, as happened the other night, when there are specific incidents, we, we can address those specific incidents and as I said, we've done that. But there's, so there are the specific ones where we can say, yes, just give us the information and, and we can make sure that you get that, that information to the school. But then, but it's also global. We need to make sure that when events are scheduled at our schools, that parents are notified that if, if their child has any, any special accommodations needed, we're providing that information to them as well. And Dr. Sullivan and I talked about that, we talked about that with the principals this week, that when they send information out, for example, if it's, you know, if it's a dance that the, the parent knows that if there's a special accommodation that they need or that their child needs, please reach out to the school and the school will put them in contact with the person that can, can best try to solve that, that problem. You know, typically it's the, the business managers at the schools. That's, that's one of the, the levels that parents can certainly communicate with. So we, it was a good meeting the other night. It was, it was unfortunate to hear some of the, some of the, the information in terms of, of their, their parents out there that feel as though that their communication is not where they would like it. But I just want the school committee to know and the community to know that we're, we're always continuing to, to do better. And when we, you know, we get information, we, we try to rectify the situation as soon as we can.
Anyone have any comments, questions? I'll make a motion, receiving place on files, superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn that at nine o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.